I am calling to order the Monday's, October 29th, 2025 meeting of Sonoma City Council. And I would ask everybody to be courteous and turn off your cell phones and watches while the meeting is in session. Yeah, so, okay, well, good. So, and please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we will start this evening off with our roll. Carl, would you please take a roll? City Clerk Bar.
Yes. Councilmember Gruney.
Here.
Vice Mayor Willander.
Here.
Councilmember Dean.
Here.
Councilmember Lowe.
Here.
Mayor Fararivas.
Here.
Thank you.
So, and as we did not have a closed session, there is no report on the closed session. So now I will move on to approval of the agenda. Ask, is there any council member that would like to make any changes to the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Do we have any meeting dedications this evening? No meeting dedications. So we were going to move on to council members' reports and comments. Pardon me?
Comments from the public?
Oh, comments from the public. Oh, that's right. I just moved right on past that. Zippity-doodah. Here we go. As long as we get to it is the important thing. So if there's anybody that would like to make a comment on an item that is not on the agenda tonight, please approach the podium. See, I was just clairvoyant. Here we go. So seeing none, I'm going to now go and see, go to our council members. Did you want to add? Yes, sir.
Mayor, I just want to make one quick announcement that our city attorney is participating via Zoom tonight. So just in case you're wondering, he's not here, but he is participating via Zoom.
Yeah, and it's not his invisibility cloak. So, all right, so now, now, here we go. We will move on to council members' reports and comments. Do we have any reports from any of our council members?
Mayor, I do have because I forgot to report to the last time.
Oh.
Yeah.
Better late than never.
Yes.
Councilmember Dean, thank you.
That is the last month, on August 28th. Sonoma Valley Groundwater and Sustainability Agency and the sponsored, the site visit, that is the, at the highway, the 121. And because our groundwater and agency got a grant from the state and we can monitoring and the wells drilling, you know, status. Because we lost a lot of the data since, and we set up a business agency. So we tried to, and the catch up to meet this kind of data gap. The, it's very interesting. Each and then five and a feet, we have the sample. And so many, you know, small containers and showing, and, you know, different colors and different in the depth. And also these kind of example, we're being sent to the lab and see, test what kind of contents. The one major concern for us, that is ocean water, sea waters intrude. And so far, and we haven't seen any significant difference because we don't have a lot of the data make, make a comparison. But overall, our deep aquifer, it's kind of, you know, healthy and all the folks right now is not for the current five years and 10 years. Instead, we focus on the next 70 years. So the guarantee on the, on the water, on the deep aquifer and shallow aquifer, they are doing well and making sure we do have good quality water for our farming, for our residential purpose. Yeah, that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have a few quick ones. I did attend the week of September 15th, the community meeting of, for input on the schools, school closures and school budget. And so I attended that meeting. I didn't participate in the discussion, but I was there just to hear the report packs from the discussion. So that, that was a very, a very interesting meeting and good to hear what people had to say. And it felt as if there was a lot of, it was done in very goodwill, even though there was varying opinions. It was done in very goodwill. And then I also attended, last week, I went to New York City, not on the city's dime. And I went to New York City to attend the mayor's climate change meeting as part of New York City Climate Week. And so there was about, I think there was about 35 mayors from all over the country, and there is mayors there from Canada as well. And one of the really exciting things about it was everybody committed to looking at all of the projects we're doing, sharing that information with each other, but really focusing on when it comes to issues around climate, focusing on how we're making the world more affordable, how we're focused on clean air and clean water, and really focus on what is working and what is working in a way to make life, individuals' lives better and also more affordable. So that was really good commitment from all, from all of the mayors. And then probably the most serious meeting that I attended was this weekend on Saturday when I was blessing the grapes and then stopping the grapes. So, and actually, our, from our Chamber of Commerce here, Mark Bodenheimer was right next to me stopping grapes along. And it was great fun, and I'm putting out a challenge tonight that next year, everybody on City Council gets together and we compete in a grape stopping. And then we can choose who will be our schwabbers or whatever it is. Anyway, it was great fun. Yes, Mark was a winner, and I didn't bring that up because I think I remember me and my husband came in last, but we put forward a very good effort. And you were with Tim Zehner from our tourism department here. All right, moving on, do we have, yes?
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see, I didn't see your hand come up. Okay, yes. Vice Mayor Willander.
So I have three things to announce, and I'm going to start with a very positive one. I have appointed a woman by name of Robin Reiners to the Cultural Fine Arts Commission. So she is my direct appointee. She's got background in the arts and is quite enthusiastic about participating and contributing to our community. That's number one. Number two, I also, I attended the CLC, which is the homeless board for the county. And I will not bore you with a lot of the details. The nugget, or the sobering nugget is with the changes or the, what's going on on the East Coast, we have significantly less funds available this year. I believe they have something called NOFA, which is Notice of Funds Available. I believe this cycle, we have 10 million available. We had 52 applicants, and I believe the most they could ask for was a million. But, so it's going to take a lot of vetting and a lot of soul searching as far as how those funds are going to be distributed. The mayor from Sebastopol, Steven, Steven Solman, made the comment that it seems like we're going to have to learn how to do more with less, which I think is a very truism for this upcoming year. The last item was, there was a, a community event of great fun. At least I had fun. We had a cemetery cleanup at the Valley Cemetery a week ago Saturday, and the turnout was rather modest. So I want to once again welcome everybody the opportunity to work in the other two work Saturdays coming up, one in October, one in November. I believe the next one up is for the vets. And I think that we have been blessed with a very rich history, and part of our rich history is expressed in our cemeteries. And again, I think that I realize that we, limited staff and lots of leaves. So I strongly encourage everyone to keep their eye on the future calendar of this, of this event. Thank you.
Yeah, we got to do something about that staff to leaf ratio, right? So, good. Thank you very much. Sorry, I didn't see you with your hand up there. All right, so, anybody else? I'm going to go back. Does anybody else have any other comments or reports?
Maybe I can talk a little bit about our delegation visited China next month, yeah. Because we are in a schedule sister city association. Pengli Committee has decided to send over the delegation visits to our sister city starting from October 16th. And it went to take more than one week and around 10 days, visit our sister city Pengli in Shandong Province, and we'll go to Hangzhou city, just 80 miles or 100 miles away from Shanghai, where there was a seventh U.S. and China sister cities in a conference sponsored by American here, Sister City International. And in the China, that is the so-called friendship association. So the, originally, actually, they invited our mayor, Patricia, but she couldn't make it because she has also sister cities, a scheduled conflict, right? You know, Mexico.
Yes.
So the, you ask me, yeah, so I'm happy to do that. One of the major work for our sister city, that is, we would like to see if any possibilities for our sister city for that is team project, they can give us some support, technical support. And it was that no any chance got any financial support. They already give us $25,000 for the naming right and so-called Pengli Pavilion. And, but they probably, they can provide engineering and material and structure, how to, you know, be compliant with the California construction and code, you know, something like that. I will report after I gather more information. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. That should be an exciting trip. So now we're going to move on to city manager comments and reports.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items, and one is to follow up on the vice mayor's comments. I did want to extend my thank you. I'll tell all the volunteers that showed up at, at Valley Cemetery to help clean up the leaves and branches and get a lot of the cemetery looking much better. It is part of our overall goal to clean up cemeteries, get the community engaged, and to activate cemeteries more than they have been in the past. And I think that's a great thing to see the public come out for that. The next one, and just as a small clarification, it is October 25th, and it would be Mountain Cemetery is the next one, and then on November 8th will be Veterans Cemetery. So we have two more coming up that you can join, and those are run from eight to, from 8:00 AM to about 2:00 PM in the afternoon. Then, and finally, I mentioned this, I think, the last meeting, that as part of our climate strategies, we are launching a citywide tree inventory. That's starting this week on October 1st and going through October 9th. So you may see people out there walking around, collecting data. It's going to be on trees that are on street trees and parks and all the city-owned properties. It will help us determine the health of the trees, any potential risks out there, and then also a plan for how we maintain those, and then also for future development of tree canopies. So it's going to be really important to have that information. As a reminder, related to trees, we do have a master tree list. The City Council did adopt that. So if anybody's looking to put a street tree in, we do have a tree list available that you can refer to. And then we are planning an Arbor Day event in the fall, once we start to see some rain come. So we'll be planting a bunch of trees in the city. So we will get more information out to the public once we have it, and then hopefully get as many people as we can to plant trees around the city. And that's all I have for you tonight.
Yes, go ahead.
May through the mayor. This, so November 8th is for the Veterans Cemetery, and so that is Veterans Day weekend, if you will. I mean, so perhaps we could promote that a little bit. Would be a great way to, for people to send recognition to veterans is to help out on that day. Thank you.
Thank you. So now I'm going to move on to our city attorney. See if our, there, see if our city attorney, David Rudeman, has any comments for us this evening?
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Excellent. Yeah, I did want to update the council. I did attend a Cal City's Legal Advocacy Committee meeting, Executive Committee meeting a couple weeks ago. A couple interesting cases were discussed. One of them is a, is a follow-on to a previous case between the Coy Nation and the city of Clear Lake, related to the obligations for tribal consultation, which is sort of an adjunct to SEQA. And so there's a, there was already a case out of Clear Lake between the Coy and Clear Lake that came out for a decision earlier this year. And now there's a second case related to Clear Lake's plan to build a recreation center up there. And another one that we discussed was another interesting case from the city of Huntington Beach, which is sued the state in federal court related to the state housing laws. And the, they were, they were denied, the federal court. Their precedent says that cities cannot sue the state in federal court because that's essentially like a child suing their parent, which is not allowed. At this point, I think Cal City is just going to be monitoring this. They are, it does look like Huntington Beach is going to ask for Supreme Court, US Supreme Court review. But it's an interesting case because, you know, while, while it hits one way in California, there are incidents, cases in, for example, Florida and Texas of cities suing their state governments in slightly different political situations. So, so that will be an interesting one to watch as well. That's my update.
Thank you very much. Moving on to our presentations for this evening, and the first one is actually a very important proclamation, designating the month of October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Sonoma. And I'm going to read the proclamation, and then I'm going to ask Stacy Questioni to come up and receive the proclamation. So are you here? There you are. Great, thank you. So, whereas the city of Sonoma recognizes that domestic violence affects one in four families in our, our local community, and that nearly all of us know someone who has been abused. The crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, and security based on the systemic use of emotional, physical, sexual, psychological, and economic control or abuse. And whereas established in 1976, the YWCA Sonoma County is our community's singular and vital resource for local residents experiencing violence in a place we should all feel the most safe inside our own homes. YWCA operates Sonoma County's only confidential safe house shelter and Sonoma County's only 24/7 domestic violence crisis hotline. They offer counseling support services for, offer trauma-informed individual and support group therapy, and they also have therapeutic preschool serving one of our most vulnerable populations, children's aged three to five year old, five years old. Whereas only an informed community effort will end the cycle of violence for local families, members of our community are encouraged to participate in YWCA's scheduled events and programs to raise much-needed funding to support their vision for every family in Sonoma County to live healthy, productive lives and be safe in their own homes. So now therefore be it resolved that I, Patricia Fararivas, Mayor of the city of Sonoma, on behalf of the entire City Council, do dear, do hereby proclaim October 2025 in the city Sonoma as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And so, would you like to come up and receive the proclamation? And we'll get a photo, and then I'll ask you if you want to say, say a few words.
Sure. Sure. True. Honorable mayor and members of the City Council, my name is Stacy Questioni, and I am the Domestic Violence Services Manager of the YWCA Sonoma County. On behalf of our Board of Directors, staff, volunteers, and especially the local families served by YWCA Sonoma County, thank you for honoring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month with your proclamation. Established in 1976, the YWCA's 24/7 DV crisis hotline, the only one in Sonoma County, as you pointed out, is still the most direct path to support for local families in need. Our confidential safe house shelter is also the only one in Sonoma County for families seeking refuge from harm. Safety planning and strategies to ensure relief are at the forefront of every call we receive. On average, the YWCA Sonoma County serves approximately 3,000 individuals in need per year with trauma-informed, community-focused services. Our client population is 90% female, 51% identify as Hispanic Latinx, 23% are children, and 4% are seniors. The majority are very low-income, and 14% are homeless. By the time they come to our shelter, they are homeless. Sadly, this year alone, Sonoma County has experienced six incidents of domestic violence, resulting in the loss of life for 15 individuals. This is in comparison to an average of one or two circumstances of this kind in previous years. Nationally and locally, domestic violence-related homicide and suicide rates are on the rise. For YWCA Sonoma County, we remain steadfast and committed to our vital and singular role in Sonoma County. Learn more about us and find resources and pathways to support at ywcas.org. In closing, please note that the YWCA has been supporting local families for nearly five decades, and we will continue to be here for Sonoma County families in need as long as you need us to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
And now, something that we do on a regular basis is we recognize local individuals, local businesses for their contribution to our community. So tonight, we're going to be presenting a certificate of recognition to Marcella Barancia. And I'm going to ask you to make sure I'm pronouncing your name right when you come up. Did I do all right? Oh, good, okay, thank you. So just a little bit about Scandia Bakery. It was actually started in 1987 by Kai Fries. But it was, it's a Scandinavian-style bakery, and I think people are familiar with the princess cake, which I think is one of, it's the most popular or well-known items there. But the interesting story is about Marcella, is in 1993, she began working at the bakery as its original location, and she had a variety of jobs. She started as the customer service person, and then she learned how to bake and fell in love with baking. And she, in the year 2000, after saving up money and working for the bakery and other jobs to supplement her income, she purchased the business and moved it to the current location. So it is really a success story in Sonoma. And so she has also employed over 100 Sonoma Valley residents, many of them young people that have gone on to do other jobs and have great success. So we've just taken great pride in Scandia. I mean, it's not unusual for you to go to an event, and that is the number one choice for, for baked goods to be offered there. So I would like you, Marcella, to come, and I will present you with this certificate of recognition. And thank you very much for everything that you've done for our community.
(applause)
Thank you. 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 Thank you very much for having us here. I really appreciate it. And on behalf of my staff, my family, I'm very grateful for this. It's been 25 years since, since I purchased the bakery, and, but it's been about 32 years that I've been working there. So I'm very grateful also to the opportunity that this man by the name of Kai Fries gave it to me so I could learn and do something with my life. So he would have been very proud because he never felt very appreciated. He thought maybe my job is not that important, but on the other hand, I always think that everybody has a place in every society, and we all can contribute even in small ways. So thank you very much on behalf of everybody who works at the bakery in my family.
Thank you. Eating sweets is a big contribution. So, yes.
So I think I'm a little bit of an instigator of this, as I went in and Scandia and Marcella have been so instrumental in making birthday cakes for my grandchildren. They always come up with a project, remember? And I came in there, and the most recent one, and I started talking to you about it, and she said, well, we want to do something, we're going to have a party on our 25th. And I said, we have to do something at the City Council. So, but, you know, I posted all the cakes that she's made on my Facebook page and tagged them, but not only are they incredibly beautiful, and there was a ballet cake, there was a Ghostbusters cake, the most recent one was a Minecraft cake, but not only were they amazing, you know, and the kids just went crazy over them, but they were, the parents were going like, these cakes are delicious. So they don't just look good, they're delicious. And, you know, you can see everybody in the back baking by scratch, and, I mean, there isn't a birthday party, you know, my house, our family cake is princess cake, and we love that. But, you know, it's, it's just been part of my family, because I, you know, I live on the west side, I'm off of Fifth Street West, and, you know, that's been our go-to forever. But I just wanted to say how important and how, you know, everybody should go there and, and get a, you know, cake made, or, you know, have, have a slice of cake. Last time I went there, you were out of carrot cake. My son was very mad at me, you know? He said, you have to get there earlier next time. Anyway, it's all very delicious, and thank you for all your contributions to our city and to our waistlines. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I forgot on the 18th of this month, we're not having kind of like an open house. It was supposed to be the fourth, but...
So on the 18th of October, there's going to be a, I'm going to, I'm doing this through the microphone so that we can catch it on the record. So you're, there's going to, you're going to have an open house?
We have an open house in the afternoon. We would have done it Saturday, but we have another person with a founding member, and she is the only Scandinavian who has worked there besides my boss, you know, and she's coming from North Carolina. Her husband was actually a Christian in Sonoma, and she's coming from, from North Carolina just for this event.
Saturday, October 18th in the afternoon.
Yes, from 2:00.
Two, from 2:00 o'clock on. All right. We'll close the place down. All right. All right. Thank you. All right. All right, very good. All right, so moving on, and now I am going to, we're going to have a presentation tonight from Zero Waste Sonoma, and also a present, a presentation, a proclamation. So let's do the proclamation first before the presentation, and I am going to have Councilmember, and you can stay right there, please. Councilmember Ding, read the proclamation and present the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor, give me this wonderful opportunity. Also, and thank you, Leslie, and thank you so much for your leadership, and let us all, Board of Members, always had a good meeting time, and we are using Santa Rosa in the City Chamber and have the monthly meeting. Thank you. This is the proclamation by Mayor Patricia Faro-Rivas. In support of the North Bay Zero Waste Week, October 11 to 18, in the city of Sonoma. Whereas, the city of Sonoma has assumed a leadership role by setting zero waste as a goal and adopting zero-waste resolution and sets a goal of zero waste by 2030. Whereas, each year, Zero Waste Sonoma and the community partners and host a one-day zero-waste symposium, as a local opportunity for industry and public to gain insight on zero-waste topics and trends, share ideas and network. And whereas, since 2022, Zero Waste Sonoma has coordinated and promoted a week of events aimed at educating and empowering various sectors of the public to act toward zero waste. And whereas, since 2022, Zero Waste Sonoma has collaborated with the North Bay groups in Sonoma, Napa, Marin Counties, and volunteers to expand these event offerings, which have included clothing, produce, sweep, recycling, and compost, and water treatment facilities, tools, repair, and reuse and fuse, little electric and food waste reduction classes, environment film screenings, and more and more. Whereas, the city of Sonoma, along with the public, private, and nonprofit organization, and the community and groups, will be hosting zero-waste events throughout the week, October 11 through 18. Now therefore be it resolved that I Patricia Faro-Rivas, Mayor of the City of Sonoma, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim that October 11 through the 18, 2025, Zero Waste Week. Yes. Okay, I like it, it's honor.
Thank you for that. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. My name is Leslie Lukash, and I'm the Executive Director of Zero Waste Sonoma. And our board has asked that we go to all of the City Councils to present what we have been up to over the past year and years. So Zero Waste Sonoma is a joint powers authority, and we were established in 1992. We have a governing body from each of the 10 jurisdictions in Sonoma Counties, and most of our board members are actually elected officials that sit on our board. Our mission is to empower personal action in waste reduction and materials management by implementing practical solutions to protect our natural resources. One of the things that Zero Waste Sonoma is known for is our outreach and education to the community. Probably the website is our single most-used item. It's a very comprehensive tool to figure out what to recycle where and how to do it. And we've had almost 150,000 visitors to our site, and 2,500 residents from Sonoma have visited our site in this past year. We also do a lot of outreach and education at events. And in 2024, we had 13 events happen here in Sonoma. So events may be e-waste collection, hazardous waste collection events, maybe being at your markets. So we try to be out very public-facing. Another tool that's highly used is our recycling guide, which is now called the Zero Waste Guide. We print about 25,000 English, 13,000 in Spanish, and we get those sent out to markets and public places, your city hall. So that's another big tool to educate the people on how to recycle and compost effectively. We do our education in Spanish. We are on three different Spanish radio programs. We do targeted events in Spanish-speaking communities and with Spanish-speaking businesses, so that we make sure that we spread our outreach to both audiences. We can't recycle our way to zero waste, we know that, so we have really focused on reuse and repair, and, you know, the first parts of reduced recycle. So we've focused on that. And this coming year, we're going to be offering a free repair fair in each of our 10-member jurisdictions. So we have one coming to Sonoma, and what a repair fair is, is we have fixers who fix electronic lamps, we have people who fix bikes, we do clothing swaps. So it's just a good way to remind people that instead of just disposing and discarding of an electrical item or a product, that you can actually get it fixed. So we'll be bringing this event to you guys. Another focus of ours is household hazardous waste management. So this is the, you know, chemicals and products that people bring into their home, and maybe the oil for their cars, and we actually operate a household hazardous waste facility. It's open Thursday through Saturdays to the residents, and it's a free service that you can come and bring your toxic products, and we will manage it and get it disposed in a proper way. We also have a Rover program where we can come to your home, if, let's say if you're elderly and you can't actually make it to one of our, one of our events. And if we receive products that are actually maybe half-full or three-quarters full, but they're still good products that another person can use, we actually have a little reuse free shop at the household hazardous waste. And then we also take paints, and we blend them into a off-white-ish color, a pinkish color, a bluish color, and a purplish color. And those are, that's paint that we give away free to the public, and it's also great for graffiti abatement. So if their city ever needs any paint for graffiti abatement, we got free paint for you. We also do electronics collection events, 14 events throughout the city. We bring it out here to Sonoma as well, and we do free mattress collection events, and we have 10 of those, and we take those off people's hands for free, and we get those recycled properly. One unique thing that we did this past year is we received a grant to do a solar panel collection program. Solar panels cannot be disposed in a landfill, but there's really no collection program to make sure that they're reused. So we applied for a grant, we did 12 events for the residents, and the residents brought over, brought us over 1,000 solar panels that we properly recycled, and that was a great model for the state, because it's actually the first time this event like this has ever happened. So we proved it can be done. Another thing on HHW, we know that the site that we have at the land, Central Landfill is not very convenient, so we actually purchased four acres in Windsor, right off of Shiloh Boulevard and the 101, and we're building a brand-new, it's going to be our primary HHW collection facility, so that we can offer our services, because we know that central Santa Rosa-Cloverdale corridor is not very well-served to our programs. 1383 is state legislation that requires that 75% of organics get diverted to the landfill, and it's a very prescription, prescriptive law. I just want to let you know that we are in compliance with the regulations on behalf of your city. Right now, we are doing compliance and making sure that all the businesses are properly diverting their material, and we're working closely with the city for that. We've also received, oh, over $3 million in grants to help rescue edible food and get that back out to people in need. So that's a very successful program to us. We've actually rescued over 330 pounds of edible food that would have normally gone to the landfill, and now gets rescued and fed, back out to the community. We have a number of free compost hubs, where we deliver compost to these little hubs. The closest one here is the Sonoma Ecology Center, where residents can go for free and pick up compost, and it's another way for us to collect the organics material from your green bin, make sure it gets into compost, and bring it back as a free resource to the community. We also give a 10% rebate for those that are purchasing 20 cubic yards of compost or more, and it's another way to make sure that this compost gets back onto our soils. Speaking of compost, we are actually in the process of zoning a new compost facility at the airport property where that red box is, where we hope to process 65,000 tons of organic material. So this is the material that goes into your green bin every year. And we also were active in doing a model construction demolition recycling ordinance. We know that CND material is highly recyclable, yet much of it still makes its way to the landfill. So we are working in collaboration with the cities to get this model ordinance before the city councils, so that we can start tracking and really monitoring what's happening with CND material. And I'll close on Zero Waste Week, even though the proclamation went first, I just wanted to let you know that we have over 50 events scheduled for 2024, and we did expand our Zero Waste Week mission, as mentioned, to both Marin and Napa County. And so we are just growing ever since we started, and it's really a way for us to partner with other organizations, like libraries, community groups, to help, so it's not just us sending the message out of zero waste and a zero-waste lifestyle, it's actually the community at large. So, yes, so that is all I have, and I'm hoping to take any questions. Thank you.
Yeah, do we, thank you very much, very comprehensive, good, very good. You're doing, you're up to a lot. And we want to get down to zero, but you're doing a lot. So who do we have, do we have any questions? Yes, Councilwoman Low?
I know we're doing, the community center is sponsoring a clothing swap this coming weekend. Are you involved in that, or is that something they're just doing on their own, or how's that?
My coworker, who's actually in charge of Zero Waste Week, and the repairs is here, so.
Yeah, we, we work with the, we're sponsoring a few of the events at the community center during Zero Waste Week. The clothing swap is something that the Refill Madness and the community center are working together on, so.
Right.
Please bring your clothing, your unwanted clothing there through Wednesday during business hours, and they'll be sorting and organizing it, and then Saturday, I think it's from 10 to 2 at the community center, is the actual swap. So we'll be there tabling and being supportive, but.
Okay, I wanted to put a pitch in for that, and I've been collecting in my household for the last month or so. So, you know, it's, it's a great, you know, a great event. Last year, I think, was the inaugural year, and everybody really liked it, and so everybody go through your closets and go down to Refill Madness, and you have till Wednesday.
Yeah, and get there early on Wednesday, because they can end up with too much. They get so much, so I would, I would go on Tuesday, early Wednesday, just as a suggestion.
And in May, I will say, was our first Sonoma, City of Sonoma Repair Fair that happened, so we'll be bringing that again next year in May, paired with that clothing swap as well. So if you have broken items, that's a chance for you to get them fixed. So that's, another event is part of Zero Waste Week, one is happening in Runner Park, October 18th. But for the clothes swap, definitely bring them early and get there early on Saturday if you want a good chance of getting what you like, because by the end, there was very little left.
Oh, good.
I will say, hundreds of pounds of clothes were saved.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
Good. Other questions? Yeah, I'm going to go to our Vice Mayor, and then.
I'm curious, what is the target date for your Windsor facility being completed?
Right now, it's at a 30% design, and that's been done, and then it's going through the permitting process, so the permitting process can take a while, let's just hope a year, but.
Yes, Councilmember Ding.
My question is, and we are, we have the local garbage collector, Sonoma Garbage Collector. I'm wondering how you cooperate with them providing a service, because they are small, they are not like ecology. So I would like to know how you work together.
Yeah, we actually work closely with your local hauler, and we make sure they are benefiting from the programs that we have to offer, and we provide them support and vice versa. We, yeah, we work closely with your hauler.
That's great. And also, last time you have the event, and also, I'm so glad you have the truck, four-day feet container sitting over there. I look at it, just only one mattress, so, over there. So we, yeah, we need to do all apart, spread the words, let more people come out. Thank you again, appreciate it.
Any other questions? If not, thank you very much, really appreciate all the work you're doing. It's impressive, very impressive. All right, now we're going to move on to our consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon with a single motion. There's no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the council or staff requests specific items to be moved for separate action. So does anybody have anything that they would like to pull from the consent calendar?
I'm of approval of the consent calendar.
We're going to do public comment first? Does anybody, and this includes the ladies in the corners, have any comments that they would like to make about the consent calendar? All right, seeing none. Now, do we have, yes, a motion? I think we have one almost ready. We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I second.
Yes, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, any opposed? None opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. All right, so we're moving on. We do not have a public hearing tonight, so we're going to move on to the regular calendar. And tonight, which is like one of my favorite things to do, we're going to be going over the fiscal year 2024-25 year-end update, so going over our budget and what's going on and what direction we're moving. And I, we are going to turn this over to Procti Ariel, our Finance Director. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Today, I am going to present the fiscal year 24-25 year-end update. The agenda for today is the following. First, I'll be talking about the fiscal year 24-25, you cannot hear me? Oh, okay. Fiscal year 24-25 overview citywide, and then next, I'll be talking about the proprietary fund, and then moving on to the general fund. This table shows the total revenue for all funds for fiscal year 24-25, with the budgeted amount to be $43.9 million, and actual revenue received for all funds to be $47.1 million. And then similarly, this table shows the total budgeted expenditure of $52 million, with the actual expenditure of $43.4 million for the citywide expenditures, which is the all funds. With that, the total surplus for all the funds is $3.7 million. And then again, I want to remind, this is for all the funds, we will be talking in-depth about general fund later during the presentation. Okay. So this slide here shows the revenue and expenses for fiscal year 24-25 for general fund, for enterprise fund, and internal service fund, along with the surplus for the year, which is 0.5 million, 0.6 million for general fund, 1 million for enterprise fund, and 0.3 million, no, actually, 34,000 for internal service fund. Okay. The proprietary fund consists of enterprise fund and internal service fund. Under enterprise fund, we have water, operating cemetery and cemetery endowment, and under internal service fund, we have management information services, vehicle replacement, and long-term building maintenance. So for the enterprise fund overview, first, I'll be talking about the water fund. The total amended revenue and expense budget for water utility fund for fiscal year 2425 is six point nine million and six point eight respectively, with the actual revenue for the fiscal year is seventy, seven point two million, and the expenses is six point one. That brings the surplus of one point one million for the year. This surplus increases the fund balance to nine point five million dollars for water fund. Okay, so this table here shows the combined numbers for the cemetery and cemetery endowment. The total budgeted revenue and expenses is zero point five million and zero point eight million respectively. The total revenue received and expenses expended for fiscal year is zero point four million and zero point six million respectively, which shows the deficit of zero point one million. This results in negative one point four million in ending fund balance for the cemetery fund. Okay, moving on to the internal service fund. Here's the table for internal service fund, which includes management information services, vehicle replacement fund and long-term building maintenance. For MIS, the fund ended with a surplus of ninety-five thousand dollars, which increased the fund balance to zero point five million. For vehicle replacement fund, there was a deficit of zero point five million for the year, which reduced the fund balance to zero point six million dollars. And for long-term building maintenance, the year ended with zero point four million dollar surplus with the ending fund balance that increased to four million dollars. Okay, now, moving on to the general fund. The total budgeted revenue for the year was twenty-four point nine million. The total actual revenue received was twenty-seven point five million. Similarly, the expenditure budget was twenty-eight point two million. The expenditure expended for the year was twenty-seven million, which brings the surplus of zero point six million. I want to add that in fiscal year 2425, about six hundred eighty-five thousand of the budgeted expense was not spent, and council approved the carrying, carrying those forward to fiscal year 2526 budget. So moving on to the fiscal year 2425, revenue budget versus actuals. Here's the graph that shows the general fund revenue for fiscal year 2425. The blue bar is the amended revenue budget, and the orange bar represents the fiscal year 2425 actual revenue received. For TOT, total revenue received was six point three million dollars, which exceeded the budget by zero point three millions. We had forecasted the TOT to remain flat. Fortunately, with the stronger tourism and steady occupancy, the TOT exceeded the budget amount of six million dollars. For property tax, the total revenue received for property tax was five point nine million. We had forecasted the property million to exceed the budget by three million. Again, the actual revenue received for property tax exceeded the total budget by, by total budget of five point five million, by zero point four million, and expected to remain strong as the interest rate declines. For sales and use taxes, which includes the general, state general fund, Bradleyburn County Taxes and Measure T and Measure V, the total revenue received is zero point two million less than the budget amount of seven point four million for the fiscal year, which ties with the forecast we did in the past. Again, this shortfall of the revenue shows the consumers are still cost-conscious in spending. For EMS ambulance billing, the actual EMS revenue matches the forecast amount of three point eight million for the fiscal year. The total budgeted amount for 2425 was two point three million, and we received three point eight for the year. Fees and service charges, it exceeded the budget of one million by zero point two million. Hence, the actual revenue received is totaled to one point two million. And we did forecast the fees to reach one point one, which exceeded our expectation. For franchise fee, it matched the forecast we, we did in the past, and actual revenue received was zero point seven million for the fiscal year. The business license tax, similarly, matched the forecasted amount and was flat for the year to be one, to be zero point five million. The interest revenue, the total budget for fiscal year 2425 was fifty-seven thousand, and the actual revenue we received for general fund was zero point four million, which is five hundred ninety-five percent more than the budgeted amount. During the fiscal year, the city expanded its investment portfolio by opening up the camp account and also establishing an investment account with the US Bank. For all funds, the total revenue received for fiscal year 2425 was one point four million dollars, which is seven hundred twenty-four percent more than what was budgeted, which was about hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. Other revenues, which includes transfer, license and permit, real property transfer tax, interest in rents, miscellaneous revenue and fines and forfeitures, exceeded the budget by zero point one million, totaling to one point six million dollars in fiscal year 2425. This next slide is just a recap from the last slide, which has, you know, it talks about different factors that affect the revenue for the year. Moving on to general fund expenditures. Okay, the total amount, amended expenditure budget for fiscal year 2425 was twenty-eight point two million, and the actual expenditure for the year was twenty-seven million, resulting in the cost saving of approximately one point two million dollars. For personal costs, the amended budget was five point four million, and the actual cost was four point eight million. This category consists of salaries and benefits. The total cost saving is zero point six million here. We forecasted the personal cost to reach five point two million based on the actual cost at the time, but the actual cost is four point eight for personal cost. For purse UAL, the total cost for purse UAL for 2425 is one point nine million dollars. And we do get the estimates for the upcoming year prior to the budget adoption. So, you know, this, this does not change. So for the professional services, the total amended budget for 2425 is two point seven million, and the actual cost is one point nine. Expenditure for professional services were below the budgeted level. This savings reflects cost efficiencies and strategies, strategic use of resources, and the services were delivered without compromising to the quality or scope. Also, six hundred eighty-five thousand of the budgeted expenditure for professional services for fiscal year 2425 was unspent and carried forward to fiscal year 2526, which is why there is a difference between actual and the budgeted amount. The next is sheriff contract. The total amended budget was six point one million, while the actual cost is five point nine. The contract is billed based on the actual cost incurred by the county, resulting in the savings to the city. For the fire contract, the total amended budget was six point six million, and the actual expenditure for the year was six point five million dollars. Next is the operating cost. The total amended budget was four point four million, and the actual expenditure was four point eight. We did forecast in the past the operating cost to be four point three million. However, with the actual expenditure, however, due to higher utility cost and increased cost of goods, the actual expenditure increased, exceeded the amended budget by zero point four million dollars. The transfer matched the budgeted amount of one point one million dollars. And then we did have a small payment for debt, about thirteen thousand for PG&E loan that we have. So, you know, the graph says zero dollars, but it is thirteen thousand for the debt services. Okay, here's the pie chart that shows the general fund expenditure by category. The biggest expenditure category for the service is the public safety, followed by the personnel cost and the operating cost. Before we move on, I would like to note that the published version of this presentation, this slide was after the reserve slide. But because of the flow of the presentation, we moved this slide before the reserves, reserve slide. So just wanted to make that note. Okay. This chart shows fiscal year 2425 general fund expenditure by department. The fire department has the largest budget at eight million dollars, followed by the police department at seven point four million dollars. Together, these two departments represents the city's most significant expenditure area. So this is the general fund five-year fiscal forecast, and it was, it has been updated with the unaudited actuals for 2425 and with the budget for fiscal year 2526. This outlook shows the structural balance through fiscal year 2930. However, however, it remains sensitive to the key cost drivers, which is public safety contract. If either, if the cost of either share contract or the fire contract increases beyond the current projection, which is three percent, the city could quickly move back to the deficit position. The need for continued monitoring and contingency planning to maintain long-term fiscal sustainability will be our top priority. And also with the uncertainty, ongoing economic uncertainty, it will continue to impact the revenue and expenditure. So we will be taking a closer look on the budget. Okay, so this is the general fund reserve in million, in million. The, the bar graph shows fiscal year 2425 forecasted reserves. That's on the left. The unaudited reserve, which is the, based on the actuals we've received, that's in the middle. And on the right, it is the forecasted reserve for fiscal year 2526. So during, so during the budget adoption, we did present the council with the forecasted reserve, which, which, at the balance, forecasted reserve balance of five point three million, based on the forecasted deficit of zero point eight million. However, our revenue received was more than the expenditure expended. We ended the year with zero point six million. So the fiscal year 2425 unaudited reserve has the balance of sixteen point five million dollars, which represents four point six million of operating reserve, one point five million dollars of emergency reserve, nine point nine million dollars of undesigned reserve, and zero point five million of other reserve, which includes non-spendable, restricted and assigned funds. The bar on the right shows the fiscal year 2526 forecasted reserve of sixteen point two million. The zero point three decrease from fiscal year 2425, zero point three million dollar decrease from fiscal year 2425 unaudited reflects the general fund surplus of two hundred seven thousand adopted in the fiscal year 2425 budget, offset by five hundred sixty-five in one-time projects funded by the reserve during the budget adoption. Okay, so with that, I would like to talk a little bit about fiscal transparency. And I'm excited to announce the launch of city's new transparency portal through OpenGov. This tool provides the city and community with up-to-date financial information as the data is integrated every night. And I would like to give a quick demonstration of this portal. This is the slide. So the transparency portal is under, it's in the website, sunomacity.org, and it's under finance and utilities. And then if you click finance and utilities, you'll see the menu here, which says fiscal transparency. If you click here, we will come to this page. And then there is a link here for OpenGov if you click the link. So, you know. So basically, it tells you, like, if this is your first time, it will tell you how to use the report. And then, or you can go directly to view reports. So we have added three reports here. Transparency Annual, which starts from fiscal year 22 through fiscal year 26. And then this, sorry, my side slide. So this shows the amended budget and the actual budget for fiscal year 21, 22, 22 through all the way through fiscal year 22, 25, 26 amended and actuals. There are two views created here already. So if you just click the revenues, this is just for the revenue. So when you scroll down, you see the same thing for all, sorry, let me just scroll down a little bit. So here, like, all the transfers, revenue, this, this is just the revenue view for, for the amended budget and the actuals, starting fiscal year 22 all the way through fiscal year 26. You can also click on these, the graph, this is the, the chart is interactive. So you can click on this, which will take you to the TOT revenue. And then here, you can choose how you would like to see your graph. So if you want a pie, pie graph, this is how it would look. Or, you know, just a paragraph, this is how it would look. And if you want to go back and see something else, you can go back. Oops, so it takes me there. Let me go back here, and then you can pick another category if you like. Or if you want to see how the report was, the default settings for the report, you can just reset. And this is, you'll get here. So now, let's say you just want to see the data for the general fund. So you can filter by fund, department, accounts. So you can go to funds and then, whoops, uncheck everything. And then just click general funds. So here's the expenses versus revenue for budgeted and actual for, for general funds. And here's the detail. So these are all the revenues up here. And then if you scroll down, they're, oh, did I just do, no, it's, okay, so it's here. And then the expenses. So if you expand that, you would see the expenses. And then if you scroll further down, you'll see the revenue less expenditures. So 425, 26, this is what it was adopted. 424, 25, actuals, this is our surplus. And then that's the one report we have. The other two report, this is just for the fiscal year 2425 budget versus actual report, where this is the citywide report. And then it's by month, but it's cumulative. So we see the amounts being increased. And again, we can do the same thing. We can try different charts. Or, you know, we have created different views. If you just want to see the revenue, this is what you would see. We have the views for expenditures only. And then you can filter it by any of the categories here. And then the third report we have similarly is for fiscal year 2526 budget versus actuals. This is the amended budget, and these are the transactions that has happened so far. So if you scroll down every month, like, once the September closes, we'll see another column added here automatically for October. So we can, this is integrated every night. And then, you know, there are views again here for just revenues. So this is, this, this is the amended budget, and here are the actuals. So you can just, you know, drill down and see all the transfers we've done so far. And then if you just want to see the expenditures, here are the expenditures. These are the purse, UAL, since we booked this beginning of the year. Sorry, this is a bad example here. Let me go back. Let me go back. Yeah, or, you know, or create a filter here if you want to see, yeah, by department. We have all the department listed, so. Or expense type, so if you uncheck this, if you just want to see salary and wages. So let me just uncheck. So this is just the salary and wages. And, uh, yeah, if you reset, it takes you back how the default was set up. Yeah. Yeah, if you have any questions or need help with the reporting, um, I recommend everyone emailing finance@sunomacity.org, and we're more than happy to help or, you know, uh, troubleshoot. Yeah. Okay, with that, um.
Can you just go, just, I always have the, the first place of how to get to this finance utility report.
So, so.
So you're in city of Sonoma, and then.
City of Sonoma, and then under government.
Under government, that's where it is.
Yes, and we have different departments.
Yep, okay.
And then, whoops.
Financing, got it, okay.
Finance and utilities.
Yeah.
And then fiscal transparency. And then it brings you to this page, and then once you're here, there is a link for OpenGov here, or here. Yeah, it takes you to the same page.
Okay, thank you, very helpful.
Yeah, okay. Okay, with that, I am done with the presentation.
Now we will go and see if we have any questions from the council regarding the, uh, report for twenty-four, twenty-five. Yes.
So with regards to your, um, OpenGov application, will there, eventually, will the budget book be on this app as well?
So, did you want to show me where the budget?
I, I, I found, I seen the budget book. Um, but I'm just wondering if these will ever be integrated.
So if you go under financial documents here, and then here, uh, full online budget book, so here's the online budget book. This is where it lives.
Right.
Not in OpenGov, okay.
So, so just to clarify, the budget book is a static document that was adopted, um, at the budget hearing. What property was showing for the transparency portal is going to be that budget number that you adopted on the left-hand side with the actuals. It'll update every night. So that'll be the one that you'll want to track normally. But if you want detail about what the budget means or explanation about the budget, that, that's usually found in the budget book that you can refer to here.
All right, thank you.
And just, you did say this, but I'm going to repeat it because you have, you speak frequently in a rapid mode, so, that this updates every night.
That's correct.
So, not recommended people look at it every day, but if, you know, it's just like, you know, you don't look at your investment report every day, but so. But it's there if you want it. Okay, other questions?
I have a question.
Councilmember Ding. I just say that so that it gets, if people are listening, they know who's talking.
Yeah. Uh, just curiosity, for our, the income revenue side, I saw that the sales tax and also TOT tax, usually, these, the two revenues, uh, reflect, uh, overall economic environment and the big picture. And here, I'm the wondering, why the sales tax is, you know, lower than our expected? And the TOT tax, if any incident or?
Um, it's just how the market is, you know?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I, it's just the consumers have, they're more cost-conscious. And if you see the wine industry or other industry, based on the HDL, like consultant, it's, it's declining, the sales tax going down. Um, hopefully, with the little bit of interest decline in the past, um, in past week, um, hopefully, that might be a little bit better. But we did forecast it to be flat for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, too.
Okay. Uh, how many in a month right now we delay to report our sales tax? Two months, or?
Uh, no, we get it every month.
Okay.
But like, it's after the fact for sales tax.
All right, yeah. Overall, I have the general comments, it's really beautiful. Because when we approve two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-five budget, that is, it was the, the round the deficit. And actually, we catch up and the, and the lines are so beautiful. Uh, it's not only in the, and, you know, your skills and also in the mindset. It's a combination of art and science as well. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any questions, Vice Mayor Wellander?
Thank you. I'm curious, um, when we have unaudited versus audited. Historically, is there much difference?
Uh, yes, in terms of reserve, there will be a difference because we're right now working on twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three. So if there are things we've not booked in the past, that affects the reserve balance. So maybe not the budget versus actuals, but, you know, if there is something like expense we didn't book in the past, we do that booking, your reserve for now will be lowered, yes.
Great, thank you.
Or go up if there's revenues that you can book.
Exactly.
Other questions? Good, at this point, we'll go to public comment. Do we have anybody that would like to make a public comment at this point? All right, thank you very much. We'll bring it back to the council for any discussion regarding the budget. Any other comments people would like to make? Yes, Vice Mayor.
The only, uh, comment or question would be the, um, a lot of information and the one item that continues to cause me a little sleeplessness is the deficit that we have in our enterprise for the cemetery. At some point, can we have some sort of update on our strategy, on how we're hoping to address that down the road?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I talked to our new parks and rec director, and he will be coming back with an update, um, on a regular basis with the cemeteries because of that deficit and to keep you informed. Since you were addressing it three ways right now, we're addressing in building capacity at the cemeteries, um, to updating our fees and getting those right sized and make sure we're capturing the right amount for the work to, for burials and for the endowment. And then third is to activate the cemeteries, getting people out to the cemeteries, like we talked about before, the volunteer efforts. So those are the three efforts we're underway right now currently. We can update you those as they progress.
Thank you.
Go back five or, fi- five or four years ago, and we realized we have accumulated a deficit of two million dollars from the previous account from the cemetery. Kind of later on, and I think you helped and fixed or the, write off some, the unnecessary or doesn't make the sense items. I'm not sure how you can do that, or?
We have not, uh, written off that debt, that debt still shows there. Uh, property wants to talk to that.
Yeah, sure, so, um, it's not on the table, but we do have on the cemetery fund. There is a due to general fund, so it still owes some money to the general fund because it's on the, uh, once we do the general entry to move that fund back to general fund, the deficit might grow, like you said. Because there is just that entry that, you know, it temporarily holds that balance of about seven hundred thousand, which is why it's one point four now. But once we reverse that, we will be seeing that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that is only I in a concern. Because, uh, the, you know, this is a deficit, looks like, you know, the department to this in the fund doesn't work well. Actually, that is historical. It cannot reflect the wonderful work. And, uh, you know, you aren't doing it right now, so that, that is no. I, I understand, you know, deficit here. But I hope you can technically fix this problem and then truly represent our current, you know, performing. Thank you.
Council, Councilwoman Low.
Hi, I, I just wanted to, um, mention, um, measure H, which is, uh, the county-wide fire tax. And, um, I was privileged enough to be selected to be on the oversight committee. And I, I just wanted to, um, and I could have brought it up in the comments. We had our initial meeting. But one of the things I wanted the public to be aware, because they're going to see the revenue come in for that, and there had been the discussion regarding, you know, fire and, um, police services and so forth, that those funds cannot be used to supplant the budget.
That's good.
So these are just funds that will be used, um, to support those services, but not to supplant. So, um, there's currently, um, a lot of efforts that are going on in the county, including building another firehouse in the valley. Um, that's the kind of thing that those funds will be going for. And so I just bring it up because a lot of times people will say, well, what about that? You know, how come we're not showing that in the budget and so forth? So I wanted to clarify that, um, for people who might ask regarding, uh, fire services.
Yes, and that's correct. We, we do not co-mingle that fund with general fund. There is a separate fund, Fund Three-One-Two, specifically for measure H. Once we receive the revenue, we, uh, cut out the check to the fire district for the same amount.
I, I will clarify, there is one impact to our general fund budget based on measure H. We're in a slightly unique situation in that, uh, we, we are paying for three firefighters, or we were paying for three firefighters last year when a grant lapsed. Uh, in measure H, we were, we worked into that, that measure H, that that would cover those three firefighters because it was a grant. And so now we are not paying for those three firefighters anymore. It's being picked up by that grant. And the only other, um, item that's probably shown on here in this expense for the fire is, uh, redcon fees. The redcon fees across the county are now being covered by measure H, which is, which is lowering everyone's expenditures just by a little bit to cover those fees. So that would be the only nuance to that point. But to your point, no additional ongoing budget can be covered by measure H, as you mentioned.
And, and, uh, you know, I'll have more to say about that after our next meeting and how it's being used, but, um, you know, just compliments to all the voters in the county who are putting their priority right and making sure that public safety is number one. Obviously, we can see it's the biggest chunk of the budget, should be. People aren't safe, you know, all the rest is, you know, what's the point? Um, but, you know, a lot of this will go into, um, moving fire districts to a more professional, from, you know, the small, um, you volunteer fire districts to fire districts that have larger capacity, including, um, housing, uh, you know, many of the firehouses were basically, as was described by Chief Aker, as barns, basically. They weren't really equipped for people to be able to stay overnight and do the kind of twenty-four-hour service that people, uh, have, need to rely on and in the county. So there's a lot that will happen with that, and, you know, I look forward to sharing more about that. But I, this just seemed an opportunity to mention it. Thank you.
And so I guess in regards to kind of direction to staff, overall, you know, we are always going to be receiving the report. But is, I think the one thing would be that we, you know, just want to be staying up to date on issues around the cemetery for sure, and trying to understand, because there will, there is always that differential when you're going to a new mode before those revenues actually start to make a difference. And especially when you're starting from a deficit point of view, it takes a while for you to see what, you know, what the efforts are. They kind of get lost in that deficit number, but just so that we're continuing to look at that and keeping up to date on where we are in the next, once we close out those audits every year.
And I'll just add, Mayor, um, to this item tonight. This is, um, a closeout of twenty-five, twenty-six. So this is a point in time where we are, where we are now that we know the information back in June. Uh, the budget that you adopted, uh, for July one, we will be coming back to you in the mid-year. So that's the mid-year budget review, and that reviews the existing current budget.
Yeah.
And so the difference between those two is when we're looking backwards now to say what happened last year, how did, what happened with the economy? What happened with hotel stays? What's going to happen over the next six months is when we come to you in the mid-years, we'll bring to you how accurate were we in our projections July one through the first six months of the year with our projections of TOT, sales tax, other things. So that conversation is going to happen, um, come January timeframe. Uh, and that'll be a chance to check in, check our assumptions, and then make any potential tweaks to the budget as we move into the next budget cycle. So it's a cyclical process that we go through. We close out, we check in, set a new budget, close out, check in, set a new budget.
And then the only other comment that I would have is, and I love the graphs, but I actually, the page that's kind of goes over the description verbally over what happened and the underlying comments beneath that, is my, one of my favorite pages. Because, you know, you're looking at the numbers, and this is the page that actually helps us understand, you know, like, you know, answer some of those questions about TOT being up, why, you know, uh, retail sales or tax, tax from sales going down. So I, I really like this page. I think that that's, it helps answer a lot of the questions that you get as you're looking through all the graphs, that you're like, oh, that's interesting. You know, like, why we're up so much more on, in regards to EMS? Like, what caused that big bump? And is that, for me, the question is understanding what the, if, if it's, there's an anomaly, what caused the anomaly? Is that, is it one time, or is this something that we are anticipating could be continuing on?
So, so when we reached, when we met last time, I, I believe you had the same questions, right? Like, when we forecasted, uh, projected this to be a three point eight, I did reach out, um, to the EMS billing, and they said it's because of the number of cases plus the, um, increase in the fee, which is why it's three point eight. But I, I don't know.
That's a lot of money.
Yeah, that's a lot of money. But I, I don't know if we will have the same revenue for fiscal year, um, twenty-five, twenty-six. It's because now the state does not cover the undocumented immigrants, so we might see a little bit, um, slow growth on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes.
Just a, um.
Councilmember Wellander.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Wellander.
We were presented a tremendous amount of information, and I thank you for that. Uh, for cocktail talk, um, I just want some clarity. I know in twenty-four, twenty-five, we had projected a, a point eight million dollar deficit. And I know through, I won't call it magic, through the skillset of you and the city manager and the rest of staff, wh- what's the bottom line then? I believe we were, uh, told that we were in a black number. And I'd just like to know what that is. In other words, we went from being in a deficit mode of, or a debt of point eight.
Right. So we, some of the forecast we did for, like, property tax, um, for TOT, it was higher than we, we forecasted. Also, the six hundred eighty-five thousand that we didn't use last year, uh, that was budgeted for the professional services. I think that helped us go to the positive number.
And what is that, just to give cocktail talk? What is that positive number that we ended in with?
Oh, point, zero point six million.
Six hundred thousand.
Yeah, six hundred thousand.
Your talking point is that we anticipated a point four million dollar deficit at the year-end, and we ended up with a point six million dollar positive.
That's, that's the information. Thank you.
And always remember that that was for budget year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Right.
Good, good. It's all good to get feel better, right? Yeah, yes. Councilmember Denny.
You know, there's a lot of nuance, obviously. But I must say, not, don't ever go out and have cocktail with Mr. Wellander. So, but, you know, having worked in government for a long time, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that, that this is really good news. And, um, and I think that, uh, you know, it's the management of the budget, it's the commitment by staff to manage their respective budgets. And, um, and so I just, I'm pleased about this. We are not out of the woods, no doubt, you know, on an economic basis, um, nationally and locally. So our work is still, still there, but, uh, but this is very good news for the city of Sonoma.
And just to add on to that, it's good news, but I think the best news is the transparency. You know, and their capability of really looking in, and then, so that, because that's what allows us to really do the forecasting. And yeah, it's never going to be exactly what we think it's going to be, but at least there, you're looking at, you, you can analyze why are we as much as possible in a better way? Why are we where we are today? And, you know, so be able to do much more, uh, so much better forecasting. So the transparency is great, and thank you for all the work that you've done. It's great, yes.
Madam Mayor. Just on that, uh, on the transparency, and thank you for asking how we get to it on the website. You know, there's a kind of a standing rule in, in website that if you have three clicks, that's all you get. And after that, people just like, I can't find it. So it's, um, that was at least five that I counted to get there. Um, if, if there is a way to produce a landing page that, you know, could be on the website with a button or something that, you know, if you think this is something you really want to promote, um, it, people will have a hard time finding it. And, and it is so worthwhile, and, you know, and I recommend that anyway.
As you can see from the audience and the interest in this, overwhelming, all right, if we have no further comments, I don't think that this is, requires a vote, there's no specific direction that we're giving, we're just accepting the presentation, so, thank you very much, and since we don't have any further public comment, we didn't have ten at the beginning, I would say that we, at this point, can now adjourn our meeting, thank you.